Have you come on in and we'll get started here in just a few seconds. So kids are meeting back there with Misty. They'll head over to the Children's Ministry area. If you did not receive one of these preliminary floor plans, then let us know. Raise your hand. Be glad to get one of those to you. So it's been a few, a little while since we have last met. And one of the things that we have talked about from the very beginning is that prayer leads planning. So before we get started here, I'd like to open up in prayer. So Jonathan's going to come and he is going to open us up and he is going to pray for us.
It's on. If not, I'll just pray loud. Yeah, I'll just pray loud. God, thank you so much for this time that we come together as a church family. Thank you for the ability to talk about the future. God, we just want to submit all plans to you. And we have a lot of things that we want to talk about, a lot of things to discover. And ultimately, the goal is to glorify you with our life, with the building, with our lives. And we want to bless this community and we also want to bless the world around us as well. And so a lot of things they've go through with finances and logistics and everything. But again, God, we need it to be on your agenda, on your page. And so thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the people that are here. Praise your name. Amen.
Man, alright, thank you Jonathan. Appreciate that. Let me just tell you what the goal of this meeting is. The goal of the meeting is to give you updated information. We've, there have been several things that have occurred over the last months. And that allows you to pray about it, think about it. I can tell you that at this point, we're not ready to vote on anything. We're not ready to make decisions on anything. However, it's coming. And there's going to be a time when we're going to be ready to make those decisions and to vote. So here's where I want to start. I want to start just with the question of why? Why are we going through all of this? And so there is reasons why. One of the reasons why we're considering building a different facility here at this location is that God has placed us in one of the best locations in the valley for a church. We may not realize it, but Ada County Highway District says that there are 26,000 cars that drive on Broadway every single day. And on some points of Broadway, it's 31,000. There are a multitude of people that are going by this location. And the reality is, as we have talked about before, there's just not many churches in Southeast Boise. One of the reasons why there's not a lot of churches in Southeast Boise is that in Southeast Boise, it's very limited in terms of land that you can purchase and build on and those type of things. We've been through a process on all of that. So we have a premier location. We have a premier calling from God in terms of reaching into our community and into our church congregation. And one of the things that we're already doing with the facility that we have is that this is already a multi-use building. Now, if you're not around here on a seven-day-a-week basis, it is amazing, all the things that occur here in this facility. Things like Bible Study Fellowship, BSF. We are a polling location for every election. There's a seniors group called Fit and Fall that meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Timberline High School will come down here a couple of times a year for some conference work. We have funerals here. There are all sorts of things that occur. And what we try to do, as absolutely much as possible, is our answer is yes. We want to be a help. We want to be a help to the community. But that's not, of course, the only thing that's going on. It's a gathering place for our church. It's a gathering place for Christians where we're able to worship. And there's teaching and serving and prayer and fellowship. And even last Friday night, there was just an amazing father-daughter ball that was held in this room. And the transformation that occurred was incredible. So thank everyone for that. Over the years, this building, and not the building, but the people who gathered here, there's been a generational impact on children and students and young adults. And if for some reason, we don't build a new building here, I just want you to know, we're absolutely committed to keeping on doing what we have been doing for the last 40-plus years. Not only are we doing what we have been doing, we're also doing things that are new. So in this, just in this last fall semester, we have a new ministry to young adults, young single adults and young married couples, which has been incredible. Our student ministry is growing. There have just been all sorts of things that have occurred, including guests that have been with us and are considering making this church their church home. The fact is this, is that we have been blessed to be here in this building. It's a blessing to be able to have this space. It's a blessing that it is all paid for. It's a blessing. That being said, I think we are all aware of the shortcomings of this building. The building from this wall this way was built in 1984-85. The education building, which is the building out here, that was built in 1990. What we have done with all of that is that it's been remodeled more times than I can count. We have done all sorts of things to make this building effective. But there are some shortcomings. A funeral that was held here about three weeks ago was for a family that doesn't attend here. They just didn't have a place for the funeral. We counted 100 or 201 people who attended here. I and our staff did a phenomenal job in serving at that funeral. And I stood out here at this corner, right here. We had signs up that said, you know, memorial service this way, all those type of things. But as I stood out here, the majority of people parked out here. And when I stood here at this corner, dozens of times, I stood there and directed people and said that the main entrance is just right around the corner. The main entrance is right around the corner. The main entrance is right around the corner. You know, I think we would agree that having the main entrance right around the corner in the back versus the front is not optimal. But that's not the only thing at all. I spoke to somebody here recently and it was during that big rain that we had. And we were talking. They weren't critical at all. They just were stating some facts. And they just said, you know, we don't mind on a Sunday morning, walking through Lake Broad, Lake Bridge Point, out there in the parking lot. But then they said, I'm not sure that people who would be guests would. Okay. I mean, those aren't the major things, but there are some major expenses. Even if we don't do anything, there are some major expenses that are coming with this building. This building is in desperate need of a new roof. All of the buildings that we have, you know, the Ed Building and this building needs a new roof. We are in need of a new parking lot. You know that. We haven't done it so far because if we're going to build, we'll take care of that in the building. We don't want to put down new paving and then have it torn up two years from now. The fencing around the perimeter is almost 35 years old and there are some portions of it that are falling down. If you have been involved in moving any of these portable walls right here, which are also, you know, about 35 years old, they have been repaired and repaired and repaired until they can't get parts for them anymore. So there are just some major things that are on the horizons. So here's what we realized. We realized that a building is a tool. We are currently sitting right here, right now, benefiting from the sacrifices of congregations in 1984 and 1990. And we're thankful for all of that. But a question when it comes to why, why are we going through this process, is this. What could be done with a modern, multi-use building? What could be done if, you know, we're going to take what we have and we're going to change some things and put some other pieces in place where we could be a blessing to our congregation for sure, but to our community as well? What if a new building opens up different avenues of reaching people, where it's a place to worship, of course? It's a place to meet. It's a place to play. It's a place for families and children. And ultimately, the why question has to be answered by, does a new facility help us to love God and help us to reach people where they are to help us follow Jesus? Thankful for what God has given us. But you know what? Before this building was built, the auditorium was from this wall to about, probably right about here, from there to here. And back there on the wall where Greg is, that's where the platform was. The auditorium was oriented, you know, where the pews were this way, looking that way. And if you've ever seen this double door right over here, that was the main entrance of the church. And what people decided was that it was worth the sacrifice. It was worth building something that could reach to, reach out to people in a more effective way. And we've been blessed and we've seen that. So what's a summary of what has happened so far in 2023? Let me see if I'm bringing you up to speed. We partnered with Building God's Way, which is a church design group. And they have an architectural arm and they have a lot of different things. They specifically build churches. They've built over a thousand churches in the last 10 years. And in that partnership, we went through a whole process. Maybe some of you remember the charrette that we did back in March. They produced a preliminary design, which we thought was brilliant. And if you were looking at what you have right now, what you'll see, and I'll talk about some of the changes that have been made. But what you'll see is if you, if you look kind of where this, where it says third place, and that's the lobby, it says check-in. And then all of this area is a children's ministry area. That wall where there's those doors going in is this wall right here. Everything from that wall that way, the offices is going to be demolished, all torn down. The education building, about a quarter of the education building, right over here, it's going to be torn down. And that's going to leave this big open spot for the lobby, or what they're calling a third place. That uses existing buildings that we have, but it also gives us the opportunity to do more. So we thought it was a great design. We reviewed the design. We gave suggestions to them. They produced a second preliminary design with minor changes. This is the third preliminary design that we'll talk about in a second. So we've been through and really have felt great about that process and the ideas and the creativity that the architects of Building God's Way came up with. In the meantime, while doing all that, our property at Amity and Linder, well, we received all of the money from the sale of that property at Amity and Linder. And as of the 7th of November of this year, there is $2,553,803 in our building fund. So we're not starting from ground zero. So that's been awesome. And the vast majority of that money is now earning in very safe, I'll say investments, but it's like a T-bill and money market. It's not, we didn't go out and buy, you know, cryptocurrency or any of that kind of stuff. But on average, that money is earning about 5.25%. So, okay, so it's working for us. We're trying to do everything that we can do. Did you notice when you came in today that there was some construction fencing around our Christmas tree lot? Some of you got really excited about that, going, "We're starting..." No, we're not. But what we are doing is that we are leasing the Christmas tree lot to a construction company who's building some apartments between our Christmas tree lot, that vacant lot out there, and Pioneer Federal Credit. So we're leasing that for, that Christmas tree lot to be used as staging area for their construction company and construction equipment. And we're going to receive about, for 10 months, we'll receive approximately $9,000 for leasing that lot to the construction company. So we're just trying to leverage everything that we can do. So we've also, in all of this, we've also received the first preliminary cost estimate of this new building. And this preliminary cost estimate came in at $9 million. Yeah, that's what I thought as well. I'm not, I'm not confident that that is final numbers at all. That struck me as a wheel of fortune retail pricing just a little bit. I think there's a possibility of that number being significantly less, but I don't know. What I do know is that once we decide what we're going to build, then we'll submit that preliminary plan to Hill Construction, Steve Hill, and he'll give us a preliminary cost as well. So we're doing that. So as we continue to work on what, what does God want us to do? What can we build? As we've been thinking about and praying about, how can a building be used to reach people? Well, all of this area is multi-use. The student ministry area is an area that, where you see where it says second floor. That's the student ministry area. It's the second floor of the existing education building. Student ministry meets in that area three times a week, oftentimes more. If you look at the auditorium, it's in, it's the big blue area. You know, it's a gymnasium auditorium. And that allows that space to be used multiple times a week. Things like upwards basketball, youth and children opportunity, recreation and fellowship is important to us as, as we build this, knowing that it's difficult to pay, however much money it's going to be, it's going to be a lot. So it's pretty difficult to spend money on space, square footage, that's only going to be used one time a week. We're committed to multi, multi-use, multi-times a week in the space. The children's ministry area, and that's where this plan is different in some areas than the original two plans. What we have been looking at in regard to the children's ministry is a partnership. And a partnership with a preschool that is Lionheart. Lionheart is a nationally known, or a national preschool that's very Christian-based. And they are looking for churches in different communities around the nation to partner with. They currently are partnering with 17 churches nationwide. Well, we met with Lionheart. We met with the architect. And we came up with this, the architect came up with this plan that would, that would meet the need of the preschool. And it's changed a little bit. I mean, there's several more classrooms that are on that right-hand side wall with exterior exits, which is important when it comes to, to meeting the code. And so this design reflects the possibility of a partnership. And so it looks in terms of, this preschool would be about 160 preschool students and about 30 staff members. We're looking at what God's direction would be. We've received the financials. Those financials are being reviewed. We're looking at compatibility between our children's ministry, the church, and the preschool. That is being reviewed as well. We are speaking firsthand to churches about their experience. And in fact, after the first of the year, we're probably going to do a little bit of travel to see firsthand how all of that works. The key question for me, and I think our team, when it comes to do we partner with a preschool or not, is this. Are people being reached for the Lord and in our church as a result of having a Christian preschool? Well, we do have some experience with that. It's a smaller scale for sure. But in partnering with Sadie and Covered in Love, where there was, you know, about 25 to 30 students, is that about right? That's what I thought. Well, Sadie and I have had conversations multiple times. There were over 50 people that came to Christ as a result of their interaction with Covered in Love Preschool. I'm super thankful for that. So this is what we're looking at. I want you to know that we're still in the what stage. No decisions have been made. We're just gathering information, whether or not we would partner with the preschool. If the, if the answer is no, we still move forward with the plans. We're not dependent upon the income from the preschool to make a determination on whether we build or not. Now, the income is, would be helpful. But to give you an idea, in the first few years, the income starts out to the church, starts out at $2,000 a month, then it goes to $4,000 a month. And they make some, Lionheart makes some investments, some capital investment into this. And that money is paid back from the revenue from the preschool. After year six, all of that money is paid back to Lionheart. And the monthly income from the preschool, when it's running full capacity, is about $15,000 a month. Well, okay, that's, that's not bad, right? But the financial aspect is not the deciding factor. The deciding factor is, are people being reached? Are we compatible? Can we do this? Those type of things. So we're still in that information gathering, but I hope that somewhere around that March 1st area, we will have those things that are decided. So that's a lot. I just thought I'd kind of spill those things out. I don't know if that, if you have some questions in regard to what I've just talked about or maybe some questions overall. If you do, we'll take just a few minutes. More than glad to answer any questions. I'll be glad to be here for as long as anybody wants to have questions at the end. But if you have a question, then we have these microphones set up. We're using microphones because we're recording this, so it'll go online. So you have to speak into a microphone. So if you've got a question, man, come on up, speak into the microphone, and let's, let's answer whatever questions you might have. Who's, you know what? The first person that comes up to ask a question, you're going to get one free large pizza. You just, you just got to have the right motivation, man.
So I guess this isn't working. So I think my question is, I'm going to, I appreciate all the information and all the logistics, like for example, the $9 million versus the $2 million. I think there's all those logistics that we're going to be evaluating. And so, but I'm going to be optimistic here for a second. And let's just say we all decide, yes, let's go for this, you know? How long is the timeframe to be able to develop this project? And then to be, and then what does the services look like?
Okay, that's a great question. You get two pizzas because that was such a good question. Alright, so if the answer is yes, then it's going to depend upon God's provision. Because what we are committed to doing is that we are committed not to take a large debt load to get this done. So just to give you some idea, for every million dollars that is borrowed at the current interest rates, and business loans work on a 20-year amortization, it's about $8,500 per month, per million. So if we're $3 million short, we can't go, what's the math, $25,000 roughly, $25,000 a month? We're just not going to make that kind of debt commitment. We'd love to be able to do this with no debt. So if, if the money wasn't an issue, then it's going to take approximately a year to get the drawings and permitting done from an architectural standpoint and then from Boise City. Could be longer. It could be 18 months. And then it's probably going to take about 12 to 18 months to do all the construction. What we're hoping is that we would be able to do this in phases to where we're not going to have to relocate as a church. So it might be that, and I don't know exactly, so you can't quote me, but it might be some of this is torn down in the lobby and the auditorium area is built first. So that this area where the children is, this is the auditorium and the gathering place, just to orient everybody here. All of this area is, is this children's ministry area. So maybe we can move out of this auditorium and move into the, well, it actually is right back here, the gymnasium auditorium while the children's ministry, all, you know, whatever the remodel is in this area. So the children's ministry and the youth ministry still meet in the Ed Building. So then when this is done, they can meet over here. And then the remodel of the Ed Building could happen. That's what we're hoping. We have, we don't have enough information to say whether or not that's 100% possible. So we are three to five years out. Okay, great question. Who else? Don't be shy.
Question. So you just kind of alluded to this, but I was curious about what the church has done in the past. We've had a lot of different remodels and building and stuff like that. Have we been comfortable with certain levels of debt in the past? And it sounds like we just alluded to, obviously, the goal would be no debt at all. Are we comfortable with a certain amount of debt? Or, you know, what are we shooting for there? What's that goal? And that's kind of a two-part because it's like, what does that look like with Lionheart? And what does that look like without Lionheart? That type of thing.
Okay, good question. Right. Oh, sure, sure. We have been in debt before. We went in debt to build this building. We went in debt to build, build the education building. But we were able to pay off this building and the education building in a much shorter timeframe than the 20 years that that, I'll call it a mortgage, that business loan happened. So we paid it off quickly. I don't want to make the commitment in terms of we'll absolutely have no debt, and here's why. If we are within, I'll describe it as a reasonable amount to finish the building. And we've sacrificed and we've given and we're $300,000 short of being able to finish everything. Would we consider that? Probably. Now, that would take a, you know, vote and all that type of thing. If we're $3 million short, I don't think so. So what would we be comfortable? I think we'd be comfortable in being able to take out the amount of debt that we could repay in a very short period of time. Somewhere around five years. That's ballpark what I would think. That's ballpark what I would think. But I just can't see us going into debt for $3 million and $25,000 a month. Here's what happens if you do that. You have to cut staff. You know, unless your income has increased, you've got to come up with that somewhere. We do not have $25,000 a month currently, right now, in margin to be able to go, oh, yeah, well, we're banking $25,000 a month, and we can just apply that toward a debt. We're not there. I mean, cash flow, we do great, very thankful for the generosity, but I just don't see us being entangled with high, high levels of debt. So thanks, good, good question. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, who else? Yeah.
Just to tag on to what Travis was saying, can you speak to how much of a difference it is between building that as a childcare center versus just children's ministry?
Yeah. Well, I don't, I can't give you exact figures, but here's what, here's what we think. Lionheart is putting in four, if this happens, they're putting in $425,000 of capital into this. That's what needs to be repaid over the six years or so of operation. That goes toward hiring people, training people. It goes toward, because you don't operate at full capacity in year one, there's a deficit there that covers that deficit, it pays salaries, it pays training, those type of things. So that's what happens. From our standpoint, we are responsible for equipping everything, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, FF and E. So we're responsible for that. Their experience says that it's somewhere between 12,000 to 15,000 per room to equip everything. You got to think about this a little bit differently, because if we're talking about a preschool that's going to be in there five days a week, plus our children's ministry is going to be in there, you know, as well, you're not exactly headed down to IKEA to buy chairs and tables. You got to have a different level of equipment. So there's 10 rooms here, that's about 150,000 roughly. There's also, it doesn't show this on this drawing, but if you look at the far right-hand side where those exit doors are going out, those exit doors are not going out into a parking lot, which is where, what it is right now. Those exits are going out into a playground. And we're all going to have some sticker shock in regard to what commercial playgrounds cost. How about this, 150 to $200,000 is what those run. So that's about 450,000 on our part. That doesn't include the differences in regard to the building and the additional classrooms. That's not that big a deal, but here's what is a big deal. In order to meet codes, you've got to have multiple restrooms. So if you've ever done remodeling, you know bathrooms are expensive. I don't know what the answer to that is, but it'll be additional. Now, when it comes to the playground, it comes to the furnishings, we would have to put in a playground and put furnishings in there for our children. So I kind of view that as about a 50/50 split. If we're, if kids are meeting in there one time a year, or one time a year, one time a week, it may not be at the same level as if they're meeting there five days a week. It'll still, it'll still be nice. So anyway, there's some split to that, but we would be, in addition, my guess is, and it's a guess, 400, another 400,000 for this, would be a guess. Okay. So good question. So one of the questions about, you know, hey, at the end of six years, that $15,000 a month that's coming in, well, that's great, but it's at the end. $2,000, I said, I got to get this straight, sorry, 15,000 a month, 180,000 a year. 15,000 a month is significant. 2,000 a month is okay, but it's not going to swing the pendulum very far from a banking standpoint. They'll look at it as an additional revenue source, but they're not going to go, oh, wow, we'll loan you 5 million. That's not what they'll do. So, okay? Good questions? Yeah, come on up. Yeah, one of the things that happened is that Lionheart, there is a staff position on the Bridgepoint staff that is called a community director. It is paid for by the income from the preschool. And the community director is the liaison between the church and the preschool. And works on Bridgepoint staff, and that's really an awesome position to have, needed position to have. Okay? Yeah.
Jeff, can you remind me who the company that created this design?
This design?
Original? Yeah.
Yeah, the architects were with Building God's Way.
Are those, that organization something that we've committed to stick with, or are there other entities that do similar things that might give us a lower cost? Or is that just in that arena?
Well, the Building God's Way architects simply are doing the, the building, if we partner with them, they're just doing the architectural work, not the construction work. Building God's Way had a construction company in the Boise area that they kind of worked with before, and so we said, hey, let's just go through the entire Building God's Way process. So we contacted them. They came in, and they're the ones that gave us the $9 million bid. That construction company has since left the Boise market. So they're not even a part of that. Steve Hill and Hill Construction, it's Hill Construction that's doing the construction on our overhang. Steve Hill is an awesome Christian man. He's built most of INNU. And if you've ever seen Tree City Church out on Eagle Road, what used to be Boise First Nazarene, he was the contractor of that church. He was the president of ESI. If you recognize ESI, ESI is one of the largest commercial construction companies in the state of Idaho, in fact, nationwide. He sold it out, he sold ESI to his son, and he started Hill Construction. And his primary work is with churches. And here's what he told me. We've known him, he was going to be our contractor for when we were going to build out at Hamity and Linder. He told me, he said, Jeff, he said, I believe that the Lord has told me that he's going to give me 10 more years if I'll just keep building churches. So he's somebody we're definitely interested in having it bid, but we'd also reach out to a couple more construction companies as well, just as a due diligence thing, go from there. So we are not tied to anybody. We've signed no contracts. We're not tied to Building God's Way Architectural Firm. We haven't signed any contracts there. What we did do, this and the, this process was $12,500 to do the charrette and for their architect to work with this design, which we thought was phenomenally cheap. So, perfect, great question, thank you. Okay? All right, who else? Yeah, Mike?
Looking around this morning, looked like we were pretty full, especially in the second service, maybe 80 to 90%. Can you comment on expectations for growth in our, on our current footprint versus the 600-plus seats that this would, that this would achieve? Plus, and then I guess also the, with that growth, would you would expect to come higher top-line revenue? So when does that become a consideration, or when do we plan for that financial, the financial impact of the growth to help fund the building project itself?
Well, okay, so let's talk about current growth. Adam, can you, do you remember our growth rate of 2022? Was it 12%?
This fall, from September to, from September to our current date, if you compare those dates to the previous year, we're 11, we're growing by 11%.
So we're seeing some pretty healthy growth. One thing about church growth that you have to take in consideration is that you have a minus 10% on average every year. You're down 10%. You're down 10% because people move, people pass away, people get mad, or they go to, they go to churches closer to their house or whatever. So you're down 10. So if you're up 11, you're up 21. And that's how, that's how it works. So, yes, so we're seeing growth. We have not reached the capacity of this building, because this building has run 533 on average in previous years. We averaged, was it 588 COVID years?
Pre-COVID?
Pre-COVID, 2019?
Yeah.
So we're still recovering back to get to that, to that level. So we have some, some room to grow. We can open up the back wall for the 9:30 service. There are several things that we can do. We will, we will do, and we have, we will be as creative as we possibly can be not to stunt the growth of people who are, are coming in. So, Adam, did you want to add to that?
I would also say, though, that since COVID, what a room can seat has changed. So you guys are enjoying, I'm looking at the leg room right here, that didn't exist pre-COVID. I mean, we fit probably, you know, almost, you know, six or seven extra rows in this building than we have now. Because what people, what's acceptable to people after something like that has changed a little bit. And we could tighten things up and things like that, but that's changed. And we have, on a regular basis, an additional, we don't, we, it's hard to quantify views on YouTube and things like that, but we've had consistent viewership in terms of people watching every single week on YouTube, right around 70 people each week. So we are growing, and that has held steady. And what we've seen is people are checking that out online or attending online for a month or two, and then sometimes staying online, but also attending in person at different times as well. So I would just say that the perceived 588 pre-COVID is one thing, but the perceived what you can do in a space has changed as well. So that's the, the thing that I would add.
So our hope and prayer and, and working toward is that our church attendance would be in the next year or two, somewhere in the 500 range, that we see continued growth. How to project those revenues is, I don't know how to project those revenues, you know? In terms of the roughly 600 seats in a new facility, we're committed to two services. So you multiply that by two, 1,200, take 80% out of that, and that's what you're, it's the 80% rule, that's what you can run, just in terms of the, the auditorium capacity. So, so that's, that's where, I think that any additional growth over that will be limited by parking and just facility, and at that point in time, if God blesses, let's think about planning a church somewhere. So, okay. Did that answer your question, Mike? Okay, great. Yeah, Bill?
So also, I, I understand we own two properties on Linder or Linden?
Yes.
So is the sale of those going to also be part of the, the overall revenue that we've got?
Yes.
And then also, there's a lot of, of construction people, electricians, that are part of the congregation. So is there any thought to having volunteer weekends, volunteer weeks to help get rid of some of the labor costs?
There's a lot of thought. Those are called gifts and kind. So somebody that might be able to partner with the general contractor and give their expertise would be awesome. I mean, I had somebody come up to me just today, said, hey, if you're talking about a new building, do you have a painter? Well, we're not, we don't have a painter, we're not in that process yet. He says, well, if you need a painter, you got a painter, I've been painting for 20 years. I don't know how all of that will work, but I'm confident that it's those type of things that will be able to reduce the overall cost. What I also am, what I also know is that this cannot be a do-it-yourself building. Can't be. That's what this one was. This one was a do-it-yourself building. It's only through the blessings of God that somebody didn't get killed in the construction. I'm not even like laughing about that, it's actually true. So it's kind of like we can do what we can do, liability issues and just the complexity of construction is way different now than what it was, you know, 30 years ago. But to answer that is yes. In terms of the two houses over here, yes, they're assets. Absolutely, they're paid off. We don't owe anything on that. And, you know, I've had real estate people that say, hey, when it's time to sell those, try it as two properties together. Don't sell them individually. The value may be greater by having those roughly an acre of land where a developer would come in, put skinny houses in there, or apartments in there, or whatever it may be, that may be the greater value. We think that that is somewhere, and it's, who knows exactly what Boise Real Estate is going to do, but that is another 500 and maybe more to $750,000 worth of asset that can go into the building fund at the appropriate time. So that's not bad. Definitely take that. Okay? All right. I appreciate the questions, good questions.
I have three questions.
Start with number three, because that'll make it.
That works.
Perfect, okay, good.
So going along with what Bill was asking about the two houses, does, would that acreage include where the modulars sit as well?
Yes.
Because there's the little dilapidated yellow house behind the one house.
Well, so there's two houses here, there's where the modulars are, we own all of that, and then we own the next one over.
Yep.
So both of those properties, front and backyards, although we've taken the backyard for modular classrooms, it's all of that. The little dilapidated house that's in the very back, we have abandoned. We don't rent that out. We don't rent it out because there's a waterline breakage that's too expensive to repair, and then I had a heating and air conditioner guy go, hey, walk in here with me, look at this heater that's in a bedroom closet, that's illegal, it doesn't meet code, and you're going to change all that. We're talking about tens of thousands of dollars to do that, and we just said, no, it's not worth it. So we shut it down.
Okay. Yeah, wasn't sure if the modulars were included in that.
We'll sell the modulars. Those modulars have some value to them, for sure.
Nice. Um, my next question would be, on the plans, I'm only seeing one kitchen. Would that be large enough to be able to facilitate to the whole of the building?
We think so. You know, part of, part of design is not just a square footage, it's how it's designed. So it's a much different design than here or here. So.
Cool. And then probably my other question would be, the children's area is set up very much for the preschool, coming in to do that. But I'm not seeing anywhere specifically for like the K through third grade. There's a spot for fourth through fifth. So would some of those classrooms that are geared towards little kids be used for a little bit older kids as well?
Well, we're trying very much to not put older kids in little kids spaces, because older kids just don't like that. In terms of the, I'm not sure that all this labeling is where it needs to be. Adam, do you know in regard to?
Yeah, so if you look at the, the map, we, we have, there's multiple rooms in here, but two, we have told Lionheart, we don't want to share. We don't want any of your equipment in them. We want our children's ministry staff to be able to prepare and create age-specific areas for groups that have real specific needs. So the fourth, fifth grade classroom at the very bottom, that would for sure be ours. That would be, because a fifth grader, whose little brother goes to the childcare center, does not want to be in the same classroom that his little brother's in, you know? He wants to be in a cool space. And so fourth and fifth grade, that would be only used by Bridgepoint Church, as well as the large group room. That would give whoever our children's ministry staff is, you know, because it's a bigger church, who knows what that's going to look like down the road, to be able to prepare for children. church, who knows what that's going to look like down the road, to be able to prepare throughout the week. You notice there's a prep and resource room that's behind the playground off of the large group room. That's also a space that's only ours, that our kids ministry would be able to use, that would not be shared space with the preschool. Now, those three rooms are primarily ours, the rest of this space is shared. And so our thought process is that if you put a first grader or a second grader in a classroom that has some preschool supplies, but we could also kind of put some stuff away with the adequate storage, that that's not as big of a deal as dropping a fifth grader into those classes. So we would love completely separate autonomous spaces, but that isn't feasible. And so what we came up with was this hybrid model, where we have spaces that are just ours, but we also have spaces that are shared and really utilitarian, so that it meets the most needs for the youngest age group of people. So when you look at that, you can think fourth, fifth grade, large group in that closet, that is ours 100% of the time, we don't share that space.
So it could be that in this large group space, that could be a first grade, third grade classroom as well. So some of it is a little bit to be determined. Okay? Okay, well, anybody else? Because I'm about ready to let everybody go here. Okay? Come on up.
Will there be any new security systems in the new building, like cameras or anything like that? Security doors for the outsides of the buildings or something like that?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. So part of all of this is the security aspect of things, cameras for the parking lot, cameras interior, thinking through exits and entrances, all of that. Whereas in our current facility, where you have two double door, two glass doors right down here, right off Broadway, we don't, we want to make sure that security is embedded in all of this.
So most of these exterior doors will be security doors?
Yes. Yeah. Yep. So if you even look at, like, before you get into the children's area where there's a check-in, there's a check-in on the exterior of the children's ministry, everybody gets checked in before they're allowed to go into the children's ministry. So you just have to have security, for sure. Okay? Okay, anybody else? Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all of your interest. So once the what question is decided, then we'll give that preliminary construction plan to Steve for a bid, and we'll see what the cost is going to be. In the meantime, we're going to continue to work on the what. Once the what is decided, and if the cost is something that we are going to be comfortable in doing, then we're going to work on the how. How are we going to do it? How are we going to get to the amount of money that it will take to do this? Now, last thing before we go, and that is this. If this building is built, it will be built as a result of a miracle from God, just like this one was. This one was a miracle from the Lord that this was built, and built for the cost that it was. So can't let, you know, a potential $9 million scare us off, not at all. Let's find out a little bit better in terms of what we're going to do, and then a little more accurate cost. And at the end of the day, if we are going to cut a ribbon on a new facility, here's what we'll do, we'll just be thankful for what God has done. And we'll just say, you will not believe what the Lord has done. And we'll be thankful. So, thank you so much for being here. Let me close in prayer, and let's do this. Lord, thank you that we're able to be here, thankful for everybody who just has an interest in this. And Lord, I know this is not, you know, the exciting, hey, we're voting on something, those type of things, it's not that yet, but these are really important things to do. So thankful for all the work that has gone on this, thankful for our property development team that has been involved in this from the beginning. And Lord, just pray for your continued direction and your continued resources. And Lord, we know that everything belongs to you, and we are thankful for an opportunity to be here on Broadway, to be able to reach people with the gospel. So God, I pray that you would bless each person, help them have a great week, and we ask this in Christ's name. Amen.